Welcome, everyone, to the May 5, 2015 meeting, Board of Selectmen. Tonight, we'll get right into our agenda. It's a light agenda, but we'll also be going at the executive session and then back out again and dealing with the Finance Committee and going over the budget and the town meeting warrant. So announcements, just like to let everybody know that next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we will be having our annual town meeting. Everyone, please attend. It's a very important meeting. It's the year-end meeting where we decide the budget and a bunch of articles and money articles and everything alike. And it's posted in the post office in quite a few places over town, one in the Town Hall, so you can come and take a look at it and also get a copy if you need to. Matt, do you have any other announcements?
No.
Anybody here for public forum? Nobody's here for public forum. Go right into the minutes.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 21 April.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, on favor.
Aye. Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 1 May.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, on favor.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we get through some of this other material? Bake sale, these kinds of things.
The DPDW director, we're gonna...
He's not here.
We're gonna go into posted business, town administrator's search. It's still up in the air and we'll be doing negotiations and so on from there. Town administrators' report.
Oh, I've only got one thing. I did receive an email late this afternoon from our auditor. The audit is done, so we should have it in hand very shortly.
Ah, great. We need that for the lease.
Okay, anything else there, Paul?
No, that's it for me.
All right.
A couple other loose ends here.
Yeah, let's go down...
Motion to approve permission for the First Congressional Church to hold bake sale here at Town Hall on May 19th at the entrance to Town Hall from 8:30 to 1:00 PM.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion to acknowledge the resignation of Ms. Angela Wright from the Council on Aging.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'd like to key, I'd like you to have, send a letter out on behalf of the board thanking her for years of service on the Council on Aging and get that out as soon as we can. Any further discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion to approve the modification to the entertainment license issued to Grill and Chill, changing from a two-person band, individual guitarist, or Smith, Cannon, and jazz band, weekends until, weeknights until 10:00, to instead four-piece band, including jazz band, individual guitarist, pianist, magician, or comic, and hours Sunday through Thursday until 11:00, Friday and Saturday till midnight.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any poll? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay.
I do have one thing before we...
Okay, go ahead.
Break for executive session and for meeting with the Finance Committee. This is regard, with regard to Article 10 on the warrant concerning the Lions Club Pavilion. We've talked about this before. This is be the third time before voters. It's, however, never been executed, although approved. But council reminds that you can't just give away property valued at $25,000 or more. You need to go through a solicitation process. So I think it's important that we, as a board, decide before we talk to the Finance Committee what we consider to be the options and have our own position established. You know, one way is to proceed with it, and if it's approved, then, as part of the last part of the article here, "On such terms and conditions as selectmen may determine and to execute all documents toward that end," if the vote is to, yes, reconvey this property, we could then go and get an appraisal. If it is in excess of $25,000, then we do the solicitation. If not, we could go ahead and convey. If it does come in greater than 25, we could reject the solicitation in the best interests of the town and consider working with the Lions Club on a long-term lease as an alternative. Right now, the issue on the table is, you, the town simply can't, town meeting simply can't convey the property directly. There needs to be consideration of its value, and if it's valued $25,000 or more per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, you have to go through a solicitation process.
I guess the concern or the question that I have is, since it was done a number of years ago, and now we're bringing it back up again, if the documents were filed back when they were supposed to be filed, we wouldn't be into this situation.
Correct, but it was never executed, so it's never happened.
It never got executed, so I, that's why I asked you to go to your attorney and let him know that it was executed years ago and... It wasn't executed. I mean, it wasn't executed, but it was voted on at town meeting years ago, and nobody filed the papers. So if they weren't filed the papers, then... That's because the vote was flawed. Okay, that was because they were, we were taking... Well, I, one thing I know for sure that Lydia pointed out to me is that the original vote only referenced one deed, and there are three deeds involved with this process, so that vote was meaningless.
Okay.
But, but the other thing that could have, you know, prevented execution on this is that, was the town at that time required to go through a solicitation process? It never did. I don't know. Did you get in touch with that Lions Club and let them know what's going on? They know what's going on. Bill Corza was in my office this morning. And their attorney knows what's going on, too. But... What is the resolution on their part? Or what... Well, I think, you know, I go along with what Jeff just said. We proceed accordingly. We have an appraisal done. If the appraisal is less than $25,000, then, you know, we convey. If it's more, we go through a solicitation process and see what happens. My feeling is, is that I doubt very seriously that anybody else is gonna have any interest in that property, even if they do, we reject it. If you come up with a $25,000 figure of value, then what you're saying is the Lions Club owns the town of Hatfield $25,000, even though... No. No?
No. If the property has valued that, then you have to go through the process.
Yeah. That doesn't mean we can't give it away if we don't want to, if we want to. Okay, 'cause I mean, it was given by the Lions Club to the town of Hatfield. Right. It just, it wouldn't be fair that we... No, it would not. That's why I'm asking the question. No, it would not. I wanna have a clear understanding of that. Yeah, but I think that's the way ahead. Okay.
And the way Jeff, Jeff's comments are how the attorney and Billy Corza and their attorney understand that that's where we're probably gonna be coming from.
They know that we're proceeding.
Okay, I mean, we have to be cautious, even though we all know this is just to try to make it the way it was intended 26 years ago.
Finally settle the issue.
Rules, laws, and things have changed, so we've gotta, you know, we just have to follow the rules, the process, get it done correctly, and this isn't anything about not conveying, ultimately conveying land to the Lions Club. I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
I agree.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out, so we have some position to talk to the Finance Committee instead of funneling around.
At this time, what I wanna do is just let everybody know that we have with us Ron Berinson and Peter Irvine. Ron Berinson, he's the town Hatfield mediator that will be dealing with, with Peter Irvine. He represents the Hatfield Beef Company, and we will be going to executive session.
I move to enter executive session under exception nine to meet with Peter Irvine and Ron Berinson.
Motion made.
Regarding a decision of the board, a license decision of the board concerning Axler Beef and transfer of a license.
Motion made and seconded.
And return to public session after that, right?
Lesko, aye.
Moriarty, aye.
Boyle, aye.
And yes, we will be returning to open session as soon as we're done with that, approximately 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Yes, as a follow-on to our executive session concerning the transfer of licenses, I move that we approve the changes requested, the change requested, transfer of license subject to the agreement with council regarding payment of the calendar year 2014 taxes.
And proceed with the process.
And proceed with issuance of the license.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, now we can go into the Lions Club.
Do we wanna start with this, or do we wanna go through the whole thing?
Let's take up the Lions Club when we go through the, as it comes to it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Maybe just introduce the Finance Committees with us.
Okay. Who do you wanna start? Let's introduce the Finance. You guys can introduce yourself on TV.
Well, Darrell Williams, Finance Committee. Paul Fisher.
Sean Robinson.
Brad Gudgen.
Missing today is Sean Berry. He'll be here with us next week.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So the purpose of while...
The purpose of the session today with the Finance Committee is, one, to kind of highlight the budget that will be presented at town meeting, as well as spend a few minutes going through the articles, explaining kind of what they are and giving a little perspective and background on them, kind of a primer for next Tuesday. And we'll start with the Finance Committee and discussion of the, any top-line comments regarding this year's budget.
The budget, we did well with the budget. Our, the bottom line is, we are about to pass a budget which is gonna be $28,616.03 under the levy limit, which is, which is good. It was a tight budget this year as far, as far as raises, and we had several departments that came to us looking for increases in salaries and increases and things that we opted not to do just because we don't, there's not enough money in the budget. I think it's safe to say, over the last five to six years, the town has spent a lot of money on water projects, with the water line, with, and rebuilding the sewer plant, essentially, and so we have a lot of debt in town, and I think at the Finance Committee, we would like to see us get some of that paid down before we take on any new projects. We have a very, we still have a very favorable tax rate in town, so we would, I assume we all wanna continue with that. Did any of you guys wanna make a comment?
That's great. Just to tag on to the comment, we did embed here a 1.5% cost of living for folks, and also tagging on to Darrell's comments concerning, rather constrained budget in many ways. The only capital projects here, or virtually every one of them, are funded either by a grant, retained earnings, CPA, Chapter 90, and others were deferred.
I believe we only, we only have a couple articles that actually call for borrowing. The Center School, we have two. Hopefully, we can take it from free cash and we won't have to borrow. Besides that, I don't think we had any other borrowings, which, which is good. Plus, we are paying some, some debt down this year, which will be nice, so next year it'll be off our rolls.
Okay, I'd just like to add that our new budget this year is gonna be $9,351,232. That's the new fiscal year 15 budget. Okay. Do you wanna proceed line by line, or pretty much you've done that? We can go through the...
Why don't we go through the articles, and then when we get to the budget article, we can, we can go, discuss various things in the budget that people wanna discuss. Does that seem like a reasonable?
It does, yep.
Okay. All right, Article 1 is just the election articles. We'll start with Article 2, just for our information.
Can I make a suggestion? We highlight some of the...
Yeah, well, I'll start off with Article 2, and then we just go, Ed, Jeff, and Brian.
I don't think we need to read them all. Why don't we just highlight the articles?
Well, I wanted to highlight the positions that are...
There's a lot of boilerplate in here that everybody sees every year. The wording doesn't change. I don't think we need to talk about those.
I do think, Jeff, it's probably appropriate to highlight the election. There's, there's a lot on the ballot this year.
Yeah. Okay, so the money article, well, Article 4 is the Chapter 90 money. That was $244,956 a share.
Ed, would you mind, before we go any further, I think that Article 1, while it's somewhat boilerplate because it's about the election, but I think if we go through it, it'll indicate the different positions that are available, or, you know, that are up for election a week after town meeting.
Right. Back to Article 1, again, town meeting on the 12th, and elections are following here at Town Hall. And on the, on the ballot, there'll be one selectman position, one town treasurer, one assessor, two school committee members, two library trustees, one elector under the will of Oliver Smith, one cemetery commissioner, two members of the Board of Health, three members of the Planning Board, one town collector, three members for the redevelopment authority, and one member for the housing authority. So there's a number of positions coming up for election this month. And second, kind of leaning forward, and we'll touch back on this as we go through the articles, there's a ballot question that will be posed, that is, should town meeting vote to pursue acquisition of the former Holy Trinity Church on Main Street for use by the Council on Aging? And it asks whether the town should be allowed to be exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and use a debt exclusion to purchase and renovate the former Holy Trinity Church. So a lot, a lot of positions coming up for election, and an important question, should the town choose to pursue that route? Sorry.
Okay.
Well, I think just, I think just the first one, so people realize how many positions there are, although you can tell by all the signs when you drive through town.
Okay.
Mr. Lesko just covered the, the chair just covered the Chapter 90. It's an appropriation we get from the state every year for roads. Chapter, excuse me, Articles 5, 6, and 7 are all interrelated, and they really cover two things. One, definition of common driveways, and these are submitted by the Planning Board, and as well, a series of entries here regarding our zoning bylaw, dealing with essentially the prohibition of commercial parking, even park-and-ride. So I'm sure the Planning Board will go through the rationale for these actions, and folks can make, make their decisions on how they plan to proceed. Chapter 8, excuse me, Article 8 is simply changing a lot from rural residential to industrial, and it's very close, or links to an industrial area as well. Article 9, abolishing the Medical Marijuana Study Committee that had been previously established in town. It's, it's a sunset on that activity, no longer required. Planning Board has taken appropriate action. Here's one we can spend a couple of minutes on, talking about the Lions Club Pavilion area behind the Hatfield Elementary School. And this is the third time that this particular issue has come before town meeting. It came, I think, in 1987, 1989, and, and here we're back again. In each time, the town supported conveyance to the Hatfield Lions Club Incorporated, a portion of that rear area behind the elementary school that presently encompasses the building, the paved area, and a section of the grassed area in front of that. But it was never executed, and so the Lions Club has come back to ask us to reconsider and put this back on the table. Now, under Massachusetts General Law, as we talked about in the earlier meeting, Chapter 30B, Section 16, the town simply can't give away land. So one of the things that has not been done is an appraisal of that section of property. If that appraisal comes in at a value of $25,000 or greater, then it's incumbent or required of the Board of Selectmen to solicit proposals for its sale, solicitation, we must solicit proposals. Now, we've kinda bounced around, kicked around some proposed approaches, and like to discuss them here with the Finance Committee, but, you know, one way is to table the whole thing and say, "We're not ready, and we're not proposing that." Another is to leave the article as submitted, and then, if approved, conduct the appraisal. If it's more than $25,000, then do the solicitation. If no one comes in, we'd then be in a position to make the transfer to the Lions Club. If something comes in, the Board of Selectmen could, for the good of the town, reject it, and then perhaps consider with, in conjunction with the Lions Club, perhaps a long-term lease, if that's a way ahead. If the appraisal comes in such that it's less than $25,000, we could convey the property. So we're proposing to leave the article on the table and have, have a discussion at town meeting as to how folks choose to go, but with the understanding that if, if an appraisal comes in at value more than 24, $25,000, we need to solicit proposals for its sale.
At a previous town meeting, was the land conveyed to Lions Club?
No.
No.
It was never conveyed. That's, that's why they're back here.
It was never conveyed.
No. I think there was a...
Does that imply that the Lions Club owned it at one point?
At one point, they did, yeah.
They deeded it to the town.
They deeded over X amount of land to the town for the school, where the elementary school is back there, in the ball field. They own that, that area in there, okay?
Not the ball field, that area?
The one that's right next to the...
Next to the ball field, right.
Next to the ball field, but where the ball field is, I, the way I saw it, is that they, they had half that ball field. That's where the dividing line was, down through the center of the ball field. So it was never conveyed all the way to the edge of the ball field that was needed for the school. That was the issue. So that's why it had to be re-mapped and then revoked here.
So would that still need to be dealt with? So currently, they would still own half of the ball field if we were to convey the, their current...
No, the town owns it 100% right now.
Right now, but if we were to give them back...
It was never transferred back to the Lions Club as of yet.
So if we were to give them back their parcel, would that include half of the ball field?
No.
No.
We're taking that part out.
If you're driving down there, and the road kind of bends to the left as you're driving, right there, there's a marker, and if you eyeball it just straight across, that's, that's where the, and from there, that section of grass and then the paved area and the building is, is the area.
Well, we would consider the parking area for the pavilion.
Yes.
And, excuse me, as we spoke earlier, we had the discussion, the three of us, before you guys came in, just to reiterate, it's just the rules and the laws and things, you know, from 26 years ago have changed, which is, you know, our ultimate goal as a board is to, what we all thought in the beginning was just kinda, here you go, and make it simple, but unfortunately, nothing's that simple. So if it is, comes, does come in at more than $25,000, our, we're not looking to not have it be the Lions Club. We just have to follow the process, ultimately having the Lions Club retain or receive official ownership of that land. So I'd like, just like to say that, so the people that are watching understand that this isn't about the town or the select board not wanting to convey the land, we just have to follow, excuse me, we just have to follow a process in order to do so.
Is Billings Way considered...
.3 tenths of a mile is 1,460 something feet of Billings Way is a town road.
So at what, what point does it discontinue being a road?
After 3 tenths of a mile.
I think it's probably in conjunction with the parking lot of the Hatfield Elementary School as it turns there.
Yeah, Bill Corza drove it yesterday, and he said it, you know, it, pretty much to the end of the road. It's the whole road.
So essentially, oh, it's to the, well, what I'm trying to figure out is...
Probably right to the hydrant.
Is there road frontage which would then make the property more valuable?
That, that became the issue, because...
Which makes $25,000.
Yeah, that became the issue, 'cause based on the information I was looking at, they looked like landlocked parcels.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, oh, wait, so we've got frontage on a public way here? Well, that changes everything. But honestly, I don't think, I would be really surprised if anybody comes in with another proposal. I think that risk is extremely low. It doesn't look like it has 200 feet of frontage, but I don't know that for sure. Lydia and I kinda roughed it out.
I don't think...
Which would then require a variance from the ZBA, which I can't imagine they would grant a variance for something like that.
Okay, so hopefully, all will work well with the Lions Club.
The worst, the worst case, from perhaps their perspective, is working a long-term And the, and the other alternative is do nothing, and so we're proposing to try and press on and try and make it work.
But the key here is they wanna see them invest their money into...
I understand that.
Make it better and stuff, yeah.
I understand it.
So with a long-term lease, they can potentially still do that?
Sure, give them a 100-year lease or something like that.
20 years. No, we could, we can only do 20.
Only 20?
Yeah, we can only give them 20.
I'm sorry, does someone else wanna talk to any of these? Ron, Article 11.
Okay, 11 is the $700, $700,000 for the elementary, I mean, the Holy Trinity Church. This is submitted by petition. Article 12, this is...
I do think that probably needs a little discussion for townspeople to fully understand what that article is all about. I know we've talked about it probably at nauseam, but townsfolk probably...
Actually, the, the next three articles are all related, as Mr. Lesko just pointed out... Actually, the next three articles are all related, as Mr. Wesco just pointed out. The first article is the petition article, with essentially a proposal that the town acquire former Holy Trinity Church or some of, acquire and renovate the Holy Trinity Church on Main Street for use as a senior center for the, quote, elderly citizens of This was not recommended by the Finance Committee.
Because of what we talked about earlier and the amount of debt that we're presently carrying and, you know, we didn't think it was tenable to...
From, that's from the financial perspective. I mean, yes, folks want to do what's right by senior citizens, but with respect to this, there's been no unmet need identified. There's been no consideration of what alternatives are there available to meet those unmet needs. There's no consideration of what those alternatives might cost as opposed to acquiring and renovating a building that has not been inspected by anyone in the town. We don't, we don't know what might be required to deal with code requirements, whether for persons with disabilities, I know it doesn't have an elevator, whether there are fire requirements, it's a change of use here, the fit up, what that will, what the condition of the building is, what might be required. I mean, you wouldn't go out and buy a house without inspecting it.
But where...
So there are a number of issues here that have not been, not been addressed.
But, yeah.
And need to be considered.
Where I might disagree, though, is the indemnification of an unmet need, you know, like, yes, maybe in the way you might be looking for, but clearly, a large number of seniors and those who signed that petition feel like their needs aren't being fully met. So I do think there is a, and just by walking through the space, being a former Council on Aging member and knowing the discussions that we have, clearly, we need a better space, whether that's at the church or downstairs, is, you know, part of the conversation, but clearly, there is an unmet need. You know, we need a better space for our seniors for a variety of reasons, for sure. But I do think we need to do our due diligence, though I don't know that that needs to be in the absence of passing this. And I have no position necessarily on this, but whether or not, we could still pass this and get the space inspected and do due diligence throughout the process, I think. I mean, we may end up, you know, ultimately, having that money aligned and purchasing it, but we're not going to go into it completely blind. I mean, before the money is transacted, I would imagine we would still inspect the facility.
Well, you're almost going into it blind because you don't have a true accurate accounting of what needs to be done there.
Right now.
And a true dollar figure, okay? When it comes down to, I mean, just the ramp that was going to go on in front of the Town Hall here was over a hundred thousand dollars, and they've only got, what, sixty or something thousand dollars allocated up there, so it's basically a similar type of ramp, so...
I would say the same could be said for the, for any project we do, for the Center School project, for example. You know what I mean? You never know when you're going into something, what the cost of...
Right, but if you don't have enough money here to do it, then we could be sitting with another white elephant.
Sure.
Well, and, you know, when talking about the unmet need, I mean, we've moved, we've done a nice job moving everybody's offices out of the basement of the Town Hall, and we have the Council of Aging still down there. And so I think that's probably the unmet need that we as a town will need to address going, going forward, whether we can make that a better space down there so that it's, it gets pretty moldy down there, which I assume is, is the issue, and, you know, that, somehow addressing that in, down the road is where we ought to go.
And we can see, you know, just from our neighbors in North Hampton lately in the newspaper, how having a meaningful seniors center actually does matter to a lot of seniors, you know, their activism around different changes going on there. To me, that, that said something to me about, you know, could we have something similar in this town that, you know, impassioned people so much that they would, you know, be involved in activism, you know, for, in support of their local senior center? And that's what we saw there. And I think we probably have a large number of seniors here who would like to have a space that they could call their own, and those are probably the seniors who have the least means, the least access to means, and, and who have a limited social network, and it would mean a lot, too. Though I'm not saying that in support of the church necessarily, but in support of the petitioner's desire to have an improved space.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page here, is that this will be a debt exclusion, so if it's voted in favor at town meeting, then it has to go through the process at the elections, and you'll be voting whether you want to do the override as a debt exclusion or not.
If Article eleven passes, then you have to pass Article twelve, which is for debt exclusion, and then...
That's, that's correct.
And then if that passes, then it has to pass at the ballot box the following week.
Right, correct. That's correct.
To make it all work.
And would I be, would the town have the opportunity, once we vote on doing the debt exclusion, to then have the property inspected prior to the actual election? I know it's only a week's time, but I imagine, you know, an initial inspection at least and report could be done in a week's time.
No, because your money, it doesn't, it's irrelevant then, because once you approve the seven hundred thousand, that's all you're going to get.
Well, no, but there's going to be a vote on the seven hundred thousand, so if the citizen, if the citizens of the town could be more informed on, you know, a potential estimate prior to the actual election...
Oh, I see what you're saying, just more information for it.
Is there anything prohibiting us from making that attempt at least?
I don't see any, any problem with that.
Day after town meeting, calling up someone to walk through the space and check it out.
If you want to do a news media type thing and let everybody know that, something like that.
Sure, okay, great. So there is some ways to still make sure that it's a smart buy if town folks wanted to vote on it.
I mean, we could probably, you know, have the building inspector take, make a fairly quick sweep through the building and, you know, take some notes. Trying to get somebody from the outside in within a week's time, well, probably not.
That might be more difficult.
Yeah.
I guess the overall point is that we wouldn't necessarily be going in fully blind, you would have a short amount of time to sort of check it out a little bit more.
I think the advantage with, if we're able to have Kyle do it, the building inspector, is he'd be looking, obviously, at more than just the cosmetic fixes, it would be more the structural.
Absolutely.
And that's, you know, that's the important thing, right? So, so...
Article thirteen, well, Article twelve, we covered, would be the seven hundred thousand for the debt exclusion. And then Article thirteen would be a sum of money, not designated yet, how much money that would be put into the public buildings maintenance account for the Holy Trinity Church for heating and maintenance and...
Sure, all the lawn mowing, cleaning.
Stuff that it's going to take to carry through the winter until it's, it's...
You can't use debt exclusion for, other than capital. You can't use it for operations.
Can't use any of that seven hundred thousand on operating costs.
So you need, you need money to maintain the thing if, if it was bought.
Whether, whether it's occupied or not.
Correct.
That's correct.
Heat, lights.
Yep.
Article fourteen, that would be any money left over in free cash that would go towards the Town Hall renovation stabilization fund. That would be for revamping what needs to be done and left in the Town Hall in the next phase.
Yeah, we, as you see, as we continue on with some of the articles, they'll close out, if approved, our commitment to the Department of Public Safety to complete work here on Town Hall, bringing the place up to code with respect to eighty-eight Americans with Disability Act compliance and Fire Code compliance. And we had until, have until one September twenty eighteen to complete that work. So, this, the funds and other articles that we're going to come to will take care of that. And these dollars going into the stabilization fund for the Town Hall are building up Little Kitty to deal with Phase Three, which would be the museum area, potential future museum area on the top floor, and money for rehabbing the basement area that's presently occupied by the Council on Aging.
And Article fifteen would be ten thousand dollars appropriated for water meters from the Enterprise Fund, Water Enterprise Fund, to do another round of replacement meters. Then Article sixteen would be to enter into a five-year lease agreement for equipment and vehicle replacement. Highway Department has a number of vehicles that they're looking for, and I believe a school van and...
There's a...
Do you have a list there?
Yeah, I'm sure to. Sewer utility truck, stainless steel sander, a water department truck, school van, highway department tractor, sidewalk trackless snow machine, payloader, two department vehicles, a bucket truck, power rake for a tractor, and then there's a whole list of items that would be turned in as a consequence, put up for auction or traded. A GMC, two GMC three-five hundreds, a Ford Expedition, a Ford tractor, a Macy tractor, a John Deere tractor, a John Deere loader, holder sidewalk machine, a school bus, and a sander for a five-to-seventy-yard dump truck, so...
And I think the important thing with this particular article is just remind the townspeople that this is something we've been doing for a number of years and it's...
Something we've been doing for a number of years, and it's level funded, and it's in the operating budget.
Right, it's not, it's not a new proposal in the sense of...
No increase over what we spent prior years on this.
It's what, a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Hundred and twenty-three, correct.
Articles seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are lumped together, are not lumped together, but they have to be all voted on as a, as a package. And this relates to the Enterprise Fund, Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund stabilization account, pulling those two together and making it into one, it's an accounting package. So you'd be able to put all the money into one account and, instead of having two accounts right now.
Well, you'll still be able to track your water costs, your water revenues, you'll still be able to track your water, your sewer costs, sewer revenues, but the retained earnings will go into one pot, so they provide you significant flexibility in terms of where you might need a, some assistance in covering down some costs.
I think the important part from the Finance Committee was that, that we will still continue to track water and sewer, you know, both revenue and, and expenses. Our Enterprise Fund is truly not an Enterprise Fund, the town, we're supplementing many of the projects through taxation, paying, paying for some of the, some of the debt acquired by both water and sewer. So, we just want to make sure as we go forward that we're able to continue to see each of them and track each of them individually so that we can rate how they're, how they're doing. Especially since ninety-five percent of the town or so is on water and only, what, forty-five, forty percent is on sewer.
Forty, forty-five percent, something like that.
And just to emphasize the same point, we've talked about this earlier, our capital requirements, we have an aging system and an incomplete sewer system, aging system overall and as well as an incomplete sewer system. So, our capital requirements for the aging system and to deal with the incomplete sewer system in addition are, are being met by, as Gerald just said, by taxation. And there's, there's no other way, quite frankly, that the rates could cover this, they'd be astronomical.
I know they're too high. Some would say they're too high right now, so...
Just got my bill over there.
Yeah, I know, I just got mine, yeah.
Article twenty is for a new heating system, that's a town share, the grant, there's a grant that was given to the town of Hatfield, and this is our share of the grant, eighty-five hundred dollars for a new high-efficiency heating system up at the highway garage. And Article twenty-one...
That would be coming from free cash.
That's coming from free cash, that's correct. Okay, Article twenty-one is to appropriate twenty thousand dollars to create an emergency water connection with the city of North Hampton. We have the water lines there, cross from one another, it has to be tied in underneath the road, and, and that way, we can feed North Hampton water or North Hampton can feed us water through an emergency measure.
And the other piece to this is North Hampton is paying an equal amount, paying the other half. This is simply an insurance.
Right, right.
Fire suppression, fire pressure, maintain pressure for fire, other emergency situations.
Yeah, because North Hampton essentially dead ends right there, so just, and so do we, so it helps us.
Article twenty-two is for twenty-five thousand dollars to repair water services before the milling and paving on various streets, including Valley and South Streets. There's got to be some major repairs in the, in the water lines and before the street is paved, so we don't have to dig them up after we pave the street, okay? And that needs to be done ahead of time. Then Article twenty-three is to appropriate from free cash ninety-two thousand dollars to dismantle the Center School. What that is, is we ended up getting bids for the Center School, it came in ninety-two thousand dollars over. Due to the asbestos in the roof, we had to remove the roof shingles, and that was going to be the costly, cost involved, that was the reason for, for the ninety-two thousand dollars, so we can get that done before it can be dismantled. And Article twenty-four...
Is the same thing, depending on how much free cash we have, either it would be done by borrowing or by free cash, and hopefully, we'll know by Friday how that stands.
Right.
And so one of those articles will be tabled, one or the other.
Okay, Article twenty-five is by petition, this is to rescind the vote. Article, Article one of the October twenty-first, two thousand fourteen Hatfield Special Town Meeting, to dismantle the Center School building, and that was by petition. Article twenty-six, see if the town will vote, amend the vote taken, Town Meeting two thousand fourteen to appropriate for reserve and community preservation annual revenues, each of the following appropriations.
Well, just an explanation, there's, each year, community preservation, as it does in Article twenty-seven, estimates its budget, and it's required by law to put it into certain categories, as reflected here, historic, community housing, open space, reserve. And then the following year, you clean up your estimate from the prior year and you estimate the subsequent year. And that's what both Articles twenty-six and twenty-seven do.
Right. And, let's see, and it's twenty-eight also, right?
Twenty-eight, this is...
Oh, no, this is...
Here are some of the uses that community preservation is coming forward with some projects using their funds.
Right.
One of them is to restore the gravestones and grave sites in the Hill Burying Ground Cemetery. It's the cemetery-located intersection of Prospect and Elm, up behind the American Legion.
Right. Okay, Article twenty-nine is transfer from Community Preservation, one hundred and eighty-five thousand to restore the Prospect Court Bridge, and it's across the Mill River.
Yeah, the Prospect Court Bridge has been not used for many years. This really does several things. One, it restores an historic, this is an eighteen ninety, or eighteen ninety-one bridge, so it serves an historic purpose. Second, we're talking about replanking, essentially replanking the bridge, leaving, which will then provide, so for non-motorized traffic, pedestrian...
For foot traffic.
Foot traffic, non-motorized, bicycles.
Yeah.
So, so it serves a recreational purpose as well, or you could sit there and throw a line off and fish if you choose. And, and third, another significant purpose, I think, is it cleans up that area, if anyone's been down there and seen it. And we have a business right, right next door, the Old Mill. So for people who have homes right near there, as well as people staying at the, at the Old Mill, just a pleasant little area to walk out and have a cup of coffee on the bridge and watch over the waterfalls. We've had several activities in town over the years, and it's always been identified as one of the iconic sites, the Old Mill and the dam and, and that area. And I know also, finally, because I support this a lot, I want to see it done. I know a lot of folks are interested in what we might be able to, to do to facilitate opening up or access to... up or access to the Mill River above that dam. And I think this will, like you create a shopping plaza, you have an anchor, this will create some interest in that whole area. And, oh, so it serves a bunch of purposes, and I think it'd be a real nice touch for the community.
Article 30 is $380,000 from community preservation, and that's the restoration of the town hall, that'd be for the elevator, the installation of the elevator, fire prevention, suppression system, and some of the demolition and installation handicap accessible sidewalks, installing HAV system, and additional handicap accessibility items.
Yeah, this completes our work that we owe the Department of Public Safety. And when you trigger, when you spend more than 35% on improvements in a facility, more than its assessed value, then you're required to bring the whole place up to code, this does that.
Article 31, this is a revolving fund article. It substant, it's, there's money allocated in each of the line items. One is for the building inspections, electrical inspection, plumbing inspection, gas inspection, DPW motor grader, and hazardous materials. Each one has a fee attached to it. What the building inspections, one are, is that on a commercial, commercial side, the building assistants or the alternates get $50 per inspection, and that comes out of revolving fund. And then DPW motor grader, that's if we lease out the motor grader, and that's for any repairs for the grader, or any costs involved. And then hazardous waste is for underneath the fire department, and that is for expenditures regarding hazardous materials, anything that comes into play there, he's got money to deal with underneath the revolving fund. This is an ongoing article, year after year it stays the same, and it's just a revolving fund for that. Article 32, that's, we're looking to have the Board of Selectmen petition, ask to a General Court for special legislation, create a combined appointed treasurer, collector position. Okay? And that's to merge the two offices together, and what we're looking at is, when we merge those two together, it will give a body here, five days a week, eight hours a day, and that way you'll have a full-time person here all week. And it'll be another tool for the public to come in and, and be able to deal with whatever they need to deal with.
Well, that is one advantage of this, we're taking two halftime positions, creating one full-time position. But it makes significant sense, from a financial management perspective, to combine those two and really strengthen that position. This is also an opportunity to kind of widen the net, in terms of the quality of people that you would attract to the position by making it appointed, being able to get the most qualified and able person to, to serve.
Okay, Article 33 is the budget, and we can talk a little bit about the budget, over some of the items that we have out there, and I'll turn it over to Darryl if you've got any questions and stuff as we go down through.
Um, okay, so, I guess I'll start off by just talking a little bit about receipts. It looks like our, our state receipts are down a little bit, about a percent down. House 1 just got passed, is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Of course, the state budget that finally gets passed doesn't pass till July, so it's our best guess as to what our state receipts. Local receipts are about 2% better. That's things like excise tax, and fees that are charged for various things through, through town. We talked a little bit about water and sewer already. Our revenues are projected to be down about 19%. That continues to highlight our concern for water and sewer. Generally, the trend is, on a wet year, people don't use as much water, because they're not watering lawns and doing things like that, and on a dry year, they use more water. And so, we've had kind of a few wet years, and so, we'll see what happens this year, but we're down. So our total, our free cash, we're hoping is going to be somewhere...
Around 300,000.
Yeah, this says 271...
That's just what has been appropriated.
Oh, that's been appropriated. So we're hoping free cash is somewhere around 300,000. We're actually hoping not to spend all of free cash, our intent is not to, not to spend every penny of it, hold some for next year. So, we have our tip, budget, of course, the budget went up 2.5%, as we're allowed to do. Something new that happened this year is water and sewer rates will follow that same 2.5% as we, as I'm sure you guys have discussed, and we've discussed last year. Going through the budget itself, I guess, I'll just, every, page one, there's no, I guess we're, Finance Committee is taking a $15,000 hit in the visitor fund, so we're going to have 30,000 instead of 45. We had, there's an increase in the accountant and accountant staff because of the recent hire of a new accountant.
And going from half to, or 19 hours to full-time?
Right, right.
Forty-hour week.
Right, and that's, that's about a $15,000 increase, and might I say, Mike, Michael, on a part-time basis, has done a wonderful job over all these years, would really appreciate working with him. It will be nice to have a full-time accountant, because financially, we've just gone to that level where we need somebody here full-time. So, see, Town Council, we're down $5,000. Town Clerk, we're down a little bit. Insurance, we have an increase of $4,000. Public building maintenance went up about $5,000, and that's because they're taking on more. They're, they're going to take, take on the janitorial maintenance work of the fire, of the fire ambulance police station. Am I missing something? Please chime right in. So when I go to the next page, that's kind of emergency services. There's, there's small changes, and most of that is due to the, you know, the, what was it, one and a half salary increase. Fire is up a little bit, because they, it was a software, didn't they? They, they had to purchase some software, which was necessary for them.
They also needed to do some pump...
Maintenance, we transferred...
Paintings on it, right.
Right.
To them.
Transferred out of the town maintenance, out of the DPW to them, so that they'll go and get some of that pump...
Contract that on their own.
Yeah, contract that out on their own. Okay, the school, um...
Contracted?
Yeah, the school, we've, is gone up about 80, I don't, I don't remember the, the percentage, it's up about $82,000, 2%, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, and we all ought to say thank you to the school, because they're very helpful here.
Absolutely.
Want to acknowledge that.
Um, that is, and Brian can speak to this better, but, you know, level funding the school is like, like cutting the school, and so we just can't afford to do that. We've got a great product up there at Smith Academy, our school choice is going well, we're drawing students, and for us to be, continue to be a viable school system, we need to continue drawing students to our school, and we cannot afford to cut. So, thank you, school, for the cut, the cutback that you did do.
Well, thank you, you know, the town's always been very, and Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, whoever's sitting in these seats, has always been very, very, understands the importance of a good school system, and has always found a way to do their best to, to fund it, so, works both ways.
Yes, thank you. VOC Ed went down a little, but that changes depending on students, you just never know. Then we go on to DPW, line items, and most of the changes there are due to contractual increases for, for the staff. There's a little decrease in maintenance, but that's because that got shifted to the fire department, it was about $4,500. The vehicle lease is in there. I should say that water and, the snow, the snow budget, is that on page one?
No. No, that'll be on...
That's further down, but Paul...
That's further back.
It was a pretty tremendous amount of money spent on snow removal, as we all know, and so that was a pretty good hit on our budget.
Yeah, last year, it was like a $62,000 deficit, this year is 137.
137.5, yeah. So, but, you know, hats off to the DPW guys, because they kept us plowed out, and they did a great job.
Did a great job, yeah.
Then we have Board of Health, Council on Aging, there were no increases there, and, and I should say, we, we should thank all these committees that continue to work hard for the town, and do it within a budget that we've constrained them to, and I know they're not all completely happy, and I apologize for that, but we do appreciate what they've done for the town within the constraints that were given. Library is up a little, but that's, that's due to, if they have to go up a certain percentage so that they get, there's a grant, there's a state grant that they get every year, so it's, you know, the $1,900 that it, that we give them, gives them much more in this grant, so. Then, debt, we got lots of debt, so, we're still paying, you know, well, I don't know, do you want to go through each of the debt line items, but...
There's, you know, there's really not much change here, but the...
This is history.
The big, the big, the big change in the debt is the school roof and window project, which didn't exist last year, so now we're paying off on that.
And the elementary school, this is the last year we pay on the elementary school, that's a debt exclusion, but that will come off...
Yeah.
...the rolls after the payment this year. We spent a considerable amount of time talking about debt, and when some of these will be done, and, you know, we're, you know, some of these are out as far as 21, you know, 2021, 2024, so, there's no additional debt being put on. So, anyway, so total debt service for the town, I hope I've got this number right, is just under $400,000, $399,901 in debt service.
Just one comment back on the school roof, we call, however, this is about half, yes, we borrowed here for this, but we got a grant for the other half of this.
We had a grant, and I believe they put school, did you put...
Yeah.
Put school choice money into it?
Over $500,000 from school of choice.
Yeah, again, the school was excellent to work with on, I, I mean, if we as a town had to come up with that yet, so, again, thank you, school. Okay, then we get into Hampshire County Retirement Group, Group Health Insurance, Unemployment Trust Fund, all that is pretty, pretty level, little increase in the trust fund. Then we go on to, on Water and Sewer Department, and we are, like I said, I think we moved all the debt that's in the water and sewer is moved over, well, some, no. This is, so, we have a rotating biological contactor, two of them, principal and interest, and that are being paid, and I think that's coming out of free cash, and that's going to be used to pay those items off, so they will come off next year, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So, we spent a total, so $171,422 of free cash is being used to pay down debt in the sewer department. So, and that's good, I, we, we, it's important that we continue to maintain our plant, and, you know, it's, we've spent a lot of money, and it's been worth it to keep it, keep it up to code. Sewer revenues estimated at $275,498, so, for the year. Water, we're doing, we're doing a little bit better in water, we don't really have retained earnings, so to speak, but at least we're in the black in both departments. What we're taking in and what we're, what we're putting out are, keep us in the black. Okay, the next page is more of a financial summary. I will say, I did forget to mention that in borrowing, if the town did decide to purchase the Holy Trinity, former Holy Trinity building, then that would be debt, that we would be, well, hopefully, debt exclusion debt.
Debt exclusion, yeah.
The copier, sometimes we put that on, and that's going to be, it's not even an article this year, we're doing, we're doing it's...
Turned to three years.
It's a three-year lease, which is nice, so. Okay, we already talked about snow and ice deficit.
Excuse me.
So we're okay there. Chapter 70 is a little, little increase, $795,000, it's about a 1% increase.
Well, it's a 1% increase over last year for a total of $795.
Yeah.
I didn't want people to think it was an increase of 795.
No, no, you're, you're right.
We wish.
I stand, no, yeah, we really wish, yeah. So our state receipts, we've kind of talked about that. Estimated receipts, I'll just tell you, I mean, estimated receipts include motor vehicle, motor vehicle excise, other excise taxes, we get a little money from meals, tax, penalties, interest, payments, charges for trash, that's the dump.
Transfer station.
Transfer station, sorry.
Some of this has been around a while.
People of a certain age.
Yeah, I guess I'm at that certain age. Then we have fees, like collector, town clerk, fires, EBA, et cetera, that's about $45,000. Anyway, like I said earlier, our, our local receipts went from, are about a 2% increase. Anyway.
You mentioned the transfer station, transfer, just for folks, since you mentioned, it pays for itself, it's self-sustaining.
Right, right.
And it provides a service.
Yeah, provides a great service. So, anyway. Did I miss, did we miss anything? So we encourage everyone to please come to town meeting, your vote counts, your participation That's the budget.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I would entertain a motion to accept the budget as...
Move to accept the town of Hatfield fiscal year 2016 operating budget. A second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Motion passes, we have a budget.
Again, this year for the hard work everybody did, for putting into, every time there's a change and, and trying to make this thing work, and we started out with, what, $100,000 something thousand dollars over budget, and then they got it down to... And we started out with, what, a hundred and something thousand dollars over budget and on they got it down to just a little bit under budget. And, uh, so that's a good thing, we're under levy limit. And, uh, again, thank you very much, everyone.
No, thank you, we appreciate working with the board and we appreciate working with all the various committees that helped put us, put this budget together. And I guess we get to do it again next year.
Thank you again for watching tonight and just remember, next week is our annual town meeting. So everyone, please, please come and give us a hand and, uh, and voice your opinion on different articles and, and so on. So hope to see you there, thank you, have a good night. Motion to adjourn, or?
I'd like to act on one item.
Okay, sure, we're not done yet.
Uh, motion to approve, uh, property lease on Billings Way to Mr. Jason Antos of Antos Farm, Eighth South Street, Hatfield.
Motion made, is there a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.